All right, we're on the air now. Mr. Chair, whenever you're ready to begin, and thank you for everyone for being patient while we work through some technical difficulties.
No problem, David. We understand these things happen. So with that, I will call to order the meeting of the Santa Barbara County Planning Commission meeting for the 27th of April and ask everyone to join me with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Mr. Villalobos, will you give us the TV coverage announcement, or can you give us the TV coverage announcement and call the roll?
I would be happy to. Planning Commission hearings are televised live on County Santa Barbara Television, CSB-TV, Channel 20, at 9:00 a.m. in the South Coast, Lompoc, San Inez Valley, Samaria, and Orca areas. Rebroadcast of Planning Commission hearings are on Fridays at 5:00 p.m. or after 5:00 p.m. on CSB-TV, Channel 20. Today's hearing will also be streamed live on the county's website and will be available for download in a day or two. Moving on to the roll call, Commissioner Brightley.
Here.
Commissioner Park.
Here.
Commissioner Farini.
Here.
Commissioner Martinez.
Here.
And Chair Cooney.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda to take action on is the reconsideration of the circumstances of the COVID-19 state of emergency. Secretary Wilson.
Good morning, Chair and members of the commission. Thank you. The department is continuing to support or recommend that we find, make the findings to remain remote based on recent circumstances and observations within the department that COVID is still around, and we are cognizant of staff and trying to maintain a safe work environment. However, there are a couple of things that I wanted the commission to be aware of as you consider making these findings and/or planning to go back in person. Two of the things to consider as you contemplate or consider going in person. The first one is when we go back to in-person, we need to, I'd recommend picking a date as we have to make notices, send out notices for the location and that it will be in-person and where everybody's at. So we need to make sure the noticing is correct for an in-person hearing. And then number two, the county has a vaccination policy, and when we go back in person, the commission would be, fall under that policy, commissioners would fall under that policy, and that requires that holding an in-person hearing would require the commissioners to provide either proof of vaccination and/or submit to weekly testing and provide those results. And so as we plan for the future, those are the two parameters we want to consider as we go back to in-person, and it would be helpful as we picked a date, and then we could provide instructions to commissioners of what that would look like and get the noticing correct. So those are my instructions and my recommendations today, Chair Cooney, in regards to the COVID findings.
So staff is recommending that we make these findings of continuing state of emergency in order to proceed with any further meetings beyond today remotely. Is that correct?
Chair Cooney, members of the commission, that is correct. We're recommending to continue to make these findings. If you make the findings today, it would take us to the June 1st hearing. And then we make the findings again, or we reconsider them. We could take it up again on May 25th and then plan for, like Chair Cooney, as we talked about, we'd leave this on the agenda so we could plan for the future. So this item will remain on the agenda so we could plan for going back to in-person, but we could start the 30 days. Today would take us to June 1st. But we have already noticed for remote hearings for the May 4th and May 11th hearing. So if we wanted to go back in person, May 25th would be the next one that we could go back in person, and we could provide instructions for that.
The first hearing in which it would be possible to give notice of in-person meetings would be the 25th of May and then for our three meetings in June. So let's hear from the commissioners. Commissioner Park.
Yes, I don't want to go as early as May 25th. I think that's rushing us, and I personally could not attend that meeting in person, although I could via Zoom. My gut feeling tells me that we should pick a date far enough in the future that we can see what happens as COVID cases go up and down. And if we have to pull the plug and say, oh, no, we better do remote again, we can do that. I think that's better than trying to time this perfectly. So my suggestion was sometime in late June or in July, pick that date, aim for it, and go there. And as far as the findings for this next month or so, I'll make that motion to adopt those findings.
Commissioner Brightley.
Thank you, Chair Cooney. My question is actually kind of back toward staff. I believe your commission is willing to go back in person, but is the concern really coming from staff? Because with the rest of the world managing COVID pretty adeptly and travel happening and everything else, is there, is that where it's coming from, that people don't want to be in a hearing room? I guess I'm a little confused why, you know, we're still worried about that.
Commissioner Brightley, the chair. I'm choosing my words carefully to protect confidentiality. There have been recent incidences in the department where staff may have tested positive, and that creates a series of notifications and isolation and quarantining that goes along with that. So everything's still in play as regards to COVID and safety and all that. So our recommendation is based on recent experiences that we've had in the department is to continue to observe remote hearings to limit the interactions between in-person contacts. And that's our recommendation, just to be able to, the next month or so, maintain and observe what's happening locally and in the region as far as COVID and numbers.
Okay, and just a follow-up question, because we had talked about this some months ago, was what does it look like? Is we would have some people, some commissioners that could dial in by Zoom remotely and then other people in the hearing room? There was, I guess I was still unclear about where we left that in terms of planning for in-person meetings, and same thing with public testimony, right?
Commissioner Brightley, through the chair. The expectation, I believe, would be that the commissioners would be in person as much as possible, and if there's a commissioner that chose to remain remote, then their location would have to be publicly noticed as a public location for members of the public to show up there. We are wanting to move into a hybrid hearing, similar to what the board's doing, to where either staff and/or the public could participate remotely. So that's where we're looking for, but the anticipation is that a majority of the commissioners would be in person in the hearing room, which would also include the secretary and the recording secretary.
Okay, so, but I mean, in terms of how county of SBTV broadcasts it, you would have then three feeds, a Santa Maria hearing room and a Santa Barbara hearing room and whoever's on a Zoom call.
Commissioner Bradley, through the chair. Now we're getting into really specific details.
We don't have to spend the time here. I'm sorry, I'm just curious.
We've contemplated that, splitting the hearing rooms between north and south. We did that in the past. It becomes challenging as far as making sure all the commissioners and/or staff are collaborating. If we go in person and all the commissioners in either the Santa Maria or the Santa Barbara hearing room, what you're seeing today would not change. It would, the feeds would stay the same. It would be more difficult as then we start adding a north-south split hearing body. But that would be something I think the chair and the vice chair, we can talk about going forward, is what that would look like.
I'm flexible. Thank you for the clarifying. Thank you.
Any other commissioner comments? I would just say that I believe that our highest duty is to the public to conduct the meetings in a way that they are easily participated in. It's been impossible much before now to do that, and so I've supported the continuing findings of emergency to justify these Zoom meetings. There's no question that Zoom can be more convenient than getting in our cars and driving across the county to all sit in the same room. But that's what we signed up for, and I think we ought to do that as soon as as it is reasonable to do so. And while we might disagree on what's reasonable, I don't think there's any doubt that Commissioner Park's motion to make the findings today with the idea of starting in June would be prudent. We do have a meeting scheduled and already noticed on the 4th of May, and I would like us to target a date at which we would have all the information we need to commence meeting in person on the 4th. That's next Wednesday. If it turns out we don't have more information than we have now, we can take that up again, but I guess I'm one commissioner who who would like to get us back in the same room in spite of the downsides, other than the real threat to participants in the hearing room, which is primarily commissioners and our immediate staff. Okay, if there are no more comments, we need a second to Commissioner Park's motion to make the findings set forth in the agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Brightley. Any further discussion from anyone? All right, then roll call for you to conduct, Mr. Villalobos.
Commissioner Brightley.
Aye.
Commissioner Park.
Aye.
Commissioner Farini.
Aye.
Commissioner Martinez.
Aye.
And Chair Cooney.
Aye.
Motion passes to five to zero.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is the Agenda Status Report and the Projection Report. We'll turn back to you, Secretary Wilson, for those.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, in regards to the status of our agenda today, we have three items that were noticed. However, an update on both the number one and number two items is the appeal of the Raza Home Stay. There was a memo that was sent out, I believe, yesterday to the commissioners, and the applicant has withdrawn that application, and so there is no action on that item today. There is a memo that outlines the commission to acknowledge that it has been withdrawn and no further action for the commission as there's no longer a project. The same as number two, the appellant's have withdrawn that appeal, and so again, there is no action on that project with the commission. There is a memo that outlines the same requirements or recommendations to just acknowledge that the appeal was withdrawn and no further action by the commission. So that leaves us with item number three, which will be a rousing five-year comprehensive capital improvement program for the commission to receive a presentation for, and staff is prepared to present on that item today. So Mr. Chair, that concludes the status of the agenda.
Comments on the agenda before we go to the the Planning Commission's schedule going out? I don't see any. Oh, yes, there's Commissioner Park.
So this was more of a, like a whine than a comment, and you know, we didn't see a lot of email traffic about item number one, and I never received any invites to site visits, but it being in my district and trying to be responsible, I spent a fair amount of time driving by there and looking around and looking at Google Maps and and looking through files and trying to see, okay, when were certain things done before the LUP was granted, or not the LUP, but the approval by the director was granted, and when was the trailer removed? I sort of regret having spent all that time, including a lot of it in the wee hours of this morning. And I guess I didn't, I must have missed that memo, but if ever there is some chance to smoke out from these parties, whether there's a pending something that we remove it from our hearing, I'd sure like to have that. So even if there's like a rumor that something might be happening, I'd like that, and for other applicants and appellants out there, I appreciate it when you contact me, kind of like the ABL people did, you know, a week before and say, we think we got something happening, so be careful and all that. Just appreciate that. And I said that a lot more nicely than judges have said it to me when we resolve things right before a hearing and they've spent a day preparing for it. So, there you go. That was my whine.
If there are no more comments on the Agenda Status Report, we'll ask Mr. Wilson to continue with the projection report. No further comments. So go ahead, Secretary Wilson.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. Looking at the projection report, our next hearing is scheduled for May 4th. And we have two items on that. An appeal of cannabis operation on Foothill Road, and as well as the appeal of a cannabis operation on Winchester Canyon, the Glee area. Then following that, we have a hearing scheduled for May 11th, which is, we had continued the El Capitan project to that date, and then there's another item on there is, which is the changes to the cannabis land use ordinance. And then moving on to May 25th, we have the Montecito Ranch recorded map modification, as well as an appeal of the signs on the Summerland Gas Station. And then June 1st, we have another appeal of a cannabis operation on Citas Pass. And then June 8th, we have a reclamation plan coming before the commission from the Energy, Minerals and Compliance Division. Nothing is scheduled for June 29th, and then Chair Cooney and commissioners in regards to our previous conversation on COVID-19 as far as picking a date on the calendar, as far as returning in person. So the June dates have gone, I've outlined as already, then looking into July, there's three dates in July that were scheduled to have hearings, but nothing projected at this point, which is July 6th, July 13th, and July 27th. So next week, on May 4th, when we consider picking a date, those are the dates in July that we have hearing schedules. And that concludes the projection report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Commissioner Park.
I've been advised by some of the folks involved in the Winchester Canyon cannabis matter that Mr. Wilson just referred to. There's four parties there, but I've been advised by some that they'll be seeking a continuance, a brief one, work on settlement and those kinds of things, which we always encourage. So that may not be as busy a day as it seems. But did I hear correctly, Secretary Wilson, there is another cannabis hearing on the 4th? There's two matters?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, we have another appeal on May 4th, which is the project on 4532 Foothill Road, another, it's in Carpenteria. I'm just getting information live as we are on this hearing that, to confirm what Commissioner Park has talked about, the applicants for Winchester Canyon are seeking a continuance. I don't have any information or a memo to that effect, but they're looking at potentially targeting May 25th as a rescheduled hearing date. So that would leave one item on May 4th.
Got it. Thanks.
That's exactly the kind of intelligence that we appreciate getting, Commissioner, for Commissioner Park and others. Mr. Wilson, so any chance that staff has to to believe there'll be an impact on the agenda, it's great to get it early, and as you know, we spend most of our study time in advance of the hearings. Okay. Progressing through the agenda, we're down now to the public comment opportunity for members of the public to share with the commission any comments, and that is matters not on today's agenda. And as it turns out, really, we only have one item remaining on our agenda. Mr. Villalobos, do you have any public speakers today?
Mr. Chair, we have one speaker, which item they are here for is unclear based on their registration. It's Mr. Bouch. If you could unmute yourself and just let us know if you want to speak at this time, or if you want to reserve your comments for any of the items on our standard agenda. I'm not seeing any response, but I can leave that open for Mr. Bouch.
Yes, in the meantime, I see Mr. Chitillo is present, and and Mr. Chitillo, would you like to comment on matters not on today's agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I would. Good morning.
Good morning.
I just noticed yesterday, and I guess this goes along with Commissioner Park's just raising issues of concern and logistics, and that concerns the county's website, which a lot of us rely on for technical information, project reports, all kinds of the county's business. And just yesterday, I noticed a complete revamp of the website. I may have missed announcements at the Board of Supervisors or otherwise, but for the public, it's quite challenging when the links that we've been using for and accumulated over some number of months suddenly go dead, and you wind up at the the main website and have to re-navigate because things aren't at all in the same place. So I'm not sure exactly what the appropriate county action would be, but I think it would be helpful if, as part of these announcements and as we go forward, that there be a continuing effort to keep, when we go through an update like this, that there's an opportunity for some training, an explanation, maybe a heads up, as it's a vitally important tool now, and we wind up spending a fair amount of time lost and looking around, trying to find a thing that we know is there. So the project information, access to CATV, the commission and their links, as well as the Board of Supervisors, are all key ingredients for public participation, and I would just underscore the importance of trying to be as transparent as possible in advance of these kinds of changes and offer training and the opportunity for members of the public to be able to follow along with the changes and not be caught blindsided. But thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chitillo, for your continuous contributions to the betterment of our department. Okay, seeing no other. Oh, I see Commissioner Park. Are you wanting to comment for?
Yes, on what Mr. Chitillo referred to, and I'm glad he brought it up. I meant to bring it up myself, but I forgot. And I kind of ran into the same trouble. I referred to that link. I did it three times in the last 24 hours. And basically, my link said this page is no longer in service or something like that, and I figured out a way to get around it by going to agendas on the main page and so forth, but it's something's missing, and we just need to make sure that we all know how to get back to this stuff, because, yes, it's great that Mr. Villalobos sends out by FedEx Express all his paperwork, but there's just times when it's much more convenient for me, given my location or the time of the day, to access it by online services, and to not know how to do that is, again, a frustrating thing for such a short hearing. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Park. We're going to transition now to Planning Commissioner informational reports. Anybody have anything for us this morning? Mr. Brightley's nodding no. Commissioner Martinez, no. Doesn't look like it. So then we have two sets of minutes to consider. The first set is a continued set of minutes from our March 9th meeting. Commissioners have comments or a motion for March 9th. Commissioner Martinez, you asked for some revision to the minutes. Have you had a chance to consider what has been proposed by staff?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Yes, I actually reviewed it, and I found it more than acceptable. Thank you.
So would you like to move approval of the minutes of March 9th?
I'll make that motion to approve.
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Farini.
I had a comment.
All right.
So on March 9th, under item six, the action by Commissioner Park to cancel the hearing of April 6th, wasn't it April 13th that we canceled in that item?
That is correct. I will make that change. Thank you.
Okay, and then on that same set, just the last sentence before the signature line, Mr. Villalobos, you're deciding April 6th, but this was a March 9th hearing, right? Or actually, we would go to April. Actually, that's correct. I'm sorry. April 6th was the next hearing. That's all.
Got it. Thank you.
Good, Commissioner Brightley, don't hesitate to continue your close review. Okay. So we have a motion and a second. We're ready for roll call on the March 9th meeting.
Commissioner Brightley.
Aye.
Commissioner Park.
Aye.
Commissioner Farini.
Aye.
Commissioner Martinez.
Aye.
Chair Cooney.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Villalobos. Our second set of minutes is for our hearing of April 6th. These are new, this hearing for review. Any comments or questions? You have a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Commissioner, just, Commissioner, we're going to balance it out. Commissioner Farini is the mover, and Commissioner Brightley seconds. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brightley.
Aye.
Commissioner Park.
Aye.
Commissioner Farini.
Aye.
Commissioner Martinez.
Aye.
Chair Cooney.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Great. The highlight of our meeting so far is about to start with our outstanding director, Ms. Plaman.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Nice to see you all. I wanted to start with a reflection about the website. You know, I probably should have noted in my previous director's report that it was, that a new website was coming. The county overall changed the platform, and then the websites were redesigned, but we didn't anticipate the extent of how different it would look for the department. And so our apology, giving a warning or a heads up that it was coming. I did notice, and now there's a picture of me on the website, which had not previously been there, so that was a little surprising.
Nice picture.
Thank you. You can thank RRM for that. They took this photo.
It's sweet. You're smiling. They must have photoshopped that.
And so anyway, yes, it has changed the I, the, the, our old platform was, was in need of replacement. And then the CEO's office really embarked on a process to try and ensure that all of our departmental webpages look the same, which is a good thing. It's branding for the county and, and so I apologize for not letting everybody know that that was coming. It kind of snuck up on me. I did have the date, but I'd forgotten to mention that. So hopefully you can go in and reestablish your links, but I, Mr. Wilson and I were chatting and we think that Mr. Villalobos can send around some active links for the planning commissioners if they want to have those available to them. On regard to COVID-19, as Mr. Wilson talked to you about, there is still an effort for us to minimize any spread of the virus when it comes about. So we, we have had some instances very recently. So we're just trying to be as careful as possible, but our counters are open for appointments still. And, but most people, as I've mentioned in the past, are taking advantage of being able to contact our counter staff via email. And they are choosing not to come in, but we will be establishing counter hours. And that will be posted on our website. We're going to start slow and have counter hours on a, I think they're going to be, Mr. Wilson, if you can correct me on this, I think they're going to be Friday afternoons or Friday mornings.
Yeah, Director Plowman and Commissioners, it's anticipated it's going to be Friday mornings. I think it's been nine to 11:30. And we'll update the website when everybody knows how to navigate to it.
So those will be for walk-ins and we want to see just how people want to take advantage of our services because the world really has changed in a lot of ways. And we have seen just a complete flood of email communications versus phone calls or appointments. And so we're going to be monitoring to see if there's a demand for more appointments or there's a demand for more walk-in hours. And then we will be adjusting our schedules as necessary. The appointments, I think, have been popular, but they haven't been completely overwhelmed. They're, they're nice because people can know when they are going to get service when they walk in the door. They're not going to have to wait in line with other folks to be able to talk to somebody. So we're just, we're, we are transitioning back to a more in-person contact and we will keep you posted on what we're learning as we move forward with that. Um, I did want to let the commission know the county recently sent a letter on one of the bills that is addressing the Brown Act. That's AB 1944, which would allow for planning commissioners to participate in a remote fashion without having to post anything. It would just be an action by the commission to determine that they do not, they're not going to be required when a commissioner is remote to post their location and their address. So a member of the public could show up. It also does require, I believe, to have video access for the public in those circumstances. And so we, as you know, want to continue with video access for the public so they can participate from a Zoom or whatever application we end up with if, we remain with Zoom. But it has, we've heard a lot from, from members of the public and members of the professions that come to the commission on a regular basis, how much they appreciate the ability to participate in this way. So we, we want to continue to provide it because we think it provides more our public access and sit in a hearing room and wait for an item. And sometimes you can wait several hours if you don't know the time, because we don't provide time certainties, because it's, it's virtually impossible to do so. And so we are, we're going to continue with this hybrid bond to in-person hearings in the future. I wanted to let you know that we did go through our budget hearing on the 12th of April. And I should let you know at the conclusion of the budget hearings that week, the board did direct the CEO's office to provide funding for one of the expansion options for long-range planning that we had presented to the planning commission. We had two options. One was just provide a new team that would be in perpetuity. So it would be a long-term expansion. The other was a three-year expansion with the use of, heavy use of consultants and the hiring of a supervising planner slash project manager, so a high-level project manager to oversee the work of those consultants. And that is the option they selected. So that they are going to give funding to the department to carry out a couple of important programs, which haven't been completely nailed down yet, but our recommendation has been to establish a greater level of ministerial permits that don't require appeals. We have that with ADUs now, but there are certain things that are minor, certain activities and development that are minor and are considered ministerial in many other jurisdictions, most of the jurisdictions. So we are going to move in that direction as a way to simplify the process for applicants, but also to reduce, what, what it will do is reduce case levels for our development review planners because right now they have everything from a 50-unit subdivision to a pool that they're processing. And so this will free up time for them to spend on the more complex cases then, and, and we can issue permits for smaller things over the counter. So that's, that's one of the ones that we're, we are recommending that we work on. And I, I see Commissioner Riley has a question. Do you want me to tell you the other one and then we can go to your question? Okay, so the other one is revamping our multifamily residential zoning. We have what we call design residential and we have, we have planned residential development as well, but those are very, very outdated. They're not modern at all in terms of how you develop multifamily housing in today's world. And so we want to revamp those and that, that'll be critical as part of our housing element process as well because we have to accommodate quite a bit of residential development to meet our RENA numbers. So we want to make sure our codes are are modern and capable of accommodating what we need to for the future. We also want to overhaul our commercial zone districts. They are woefully out of date. And we've talked about that in the past, specifically shopping center. And so we want to make sure that there's the, the ability for resident, more residential development and mixed use to happen in those zone districts as well. We need to sort of balance that with what we jobs housing balance. And so we're going to have to be looking at what we do in North County versus South County because there's a, a concern that we might have a loss of commercial development up in North County if we allow too much residential. So we're, we're going to be monitoring how to address that issue because they need more jobs in North County. So those are the two programs that we are promoting the, the, the subject of this expansion. So I'm happy to answer your question, Commissioner Bridley.
Thank you, Director Plowman. I actually watched it. I don't know. I watched it over the weekend because I was curious. You did a great job and I wanted everyone on the commission to know how many compliments Planning and Development got from the board. I thought it was a great, it was very informative. So my questions specifically were their, their choice to go to the high-level consult, high-level staff position permanently and the consultant team. I sort of missed that because it seems like you, they're always going to be long-range planning needs. And so why did they do that? Was that less costly in your projection than the new team of regular staff?
So Commissioner Bridley through the chair, they didn't make that decision at my presentation. They waited to the end of the budget hearings when they were giving direction to the CEO office about what they wanted to see built into the budget. So people come with their requests, different departments come with their requests, and then they give direction to say, build these five things into the budget so that when the budget comes back, it's already funded. Then they make choices about other things later in the budget. So that's how that works. But I think they were concerned about the long-term general fund costs associated with a permanent team.
Okay.
Because it's about $750,000 a year for a new team that would last in perpetuity. And so I think they wanted to see how things work with a, a heavy reliance on consultants and more programs that they want to see moved forward. I think the board has experienced some frustration with the fact that the division is sort of consumed by state mandates.
Yes, it is.
Right, right. And that's challenging because we can't get to the work that the board wants to, us to get to.
Right.
So this is one way to try and do that. And so we'll see how it works.
Okay, and then my second question was, so, so I, I, you've been very consistent about this and it's very, very smart to actually take a bunch of, whatever you can and downshift it to a ministerial level. I guess the question is, you know, that was the idea with cannabis cases, yet when you do a ministerial case, we're still talking about an LUP or a CDP that's appealable? Are you thinking about a non-appealable slot in the permit matrix?
That's correct, Commissioner Bridley through the chair. It would be non-appealable.
Okay, great. We don't even have to, you know, don't even have to talk more about it, but I just, you know, I, I believe that the land use permit appeal has caught a lot of people by surprise from the cannabis chapters. So that's good news. And then I, oh, the, the, re-looking at the commercial district. So we're hoping that the tenant improvement in the commercial, you know, shopping centers can be a ministerial thing, right? Because I know we really struggled with our little gym going into the former retail space at the turnpike shopping, Magnolia Shopping Center and everybody's home. Why are we at this hearing? Why is the applicant at this hearing? Why did staff have to do it? So that's, that's on that list, right?
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you for the time.
Sure, sure. And any other questions on that item? And otherwise I can move on.
Mr. Plowman, I do have a, a concern raised by the idea of downgrading some permits to non-appealable. Every time I've seen this happen in my time on the commission, there, there is concern expressed by members of the public that what we consider to be a minor item in general may be very impacted to a neighborhood, a next-door neighbor. You know, somebody that lives close to a project and and the planning commission has been seen as the, the first level of review of what might be perceived to be inappropriate permit issue. And so I'm wondering if when you develop a change in permit processing from the way it is now to non-appealable, the planning commission could at least give some consideration and comment on those based on our experience with similar permits in the past.
So, Mr. Chair, the commission will be a, an important part of that process. So you will be reviewing every change that we recommend and can, will provide comment and then make recommendations to the board regarding what would become ministerial versus what would not continue to have a land use permit. So you'll definitely be an integral part of that process.
That's great. I, you know, we could become super efficient if we just eliminated the planning commission altogether and, and just had your office make all the decisions, but and, and maybe that's what you're thinking ultimately. I could understand that approach, but as long as we, as we can work together to find the correct candidates for, for the downgrading, I have no problem with it.
We don't have to be hired on as consultants, high-level consultants.
That's right.
With the workload in that situation. Sorry.
No, the planning commission, it plays a very, very important role in our process. So we, you're, the commission's not going anywhere anytime soon.
Thank you. Thank you. Why don't you finish your report? I do note that Mr. Chitillo has a comment, I suspect, on this very subject. Would you rather take it now or at the end of your report?
Let, let's take it at the end of my report. I'm almost done. And then he may end up wanting to comment on any, something else in it as well. I did, the, the other part of this conversation about what came out of the hearings is we changed when we were going with the long-range work program to the board. And we are now going next week. Normally we go before the budget hearings, but we had to make some changes to our recommendations in the long-range work program to accommodate the housing element schedule that's set by the state. And so as we got more deeply into the housing element process, we realized we were going to need to realign resources to make sure that we could meet the deadline. And so that is what we did. And so you'll be seeing on the 3rd of May, a slightly different version of the long-range work program where we are going to be delaying work on certain programs in order to make sure we can get the housing element done. So I wanted to let you know that and that if you're interested, you can certainly watch it or we can, I can give you individuals a briefing about exactly what changed. But we did, you know, we're, we are pulling away our work with some of the programs that are going through the coastal commission right now where we got a little bit stuck. We have to postpone that. And, and there's a couple other items that we're not going to be working on, like implementing state housing bills. We're not going to be able to work on that next fiscal year because we're going to be too busy with the housing element. So tho, those are the types of things that we had to delay for a fiscal year. And so, y, you know, if you're interested, please keep an eye on that board hearing. Otherwise, I'm happy to answer any other questions about that. And then just in terms of future board items, along with the long-range work program, we have the Orchid Gas Station Appeal on May 3rd at the board. And then we have on the 17th, three items, the Vandebos Appeal, an ADU Appeal and Santa Barbara Ranch, which is something that was, we, we are required with Santa Barbara Ranch to make a determination their compliance with their development agreement. And there was an appeal of that and we are going back to the board. They, they had asked us to try and work with the the representatives from Santa Barbara Ranch on the restoration project there. So we will be at the board on the 17th with that. I'm, I'm sorry, I missed the 10th. May 10th, that is Key Site 3. We're going back to the board on Key Site 3. And then on the 24th of May, we will have two appeals for carpentry, cannabis projects, Everbloom and Creekside. So both of those will be on the 24th. So now I'm happy to entertain the question from Mr. Chitillo or any other members of the commission.
Well, that's, Mr. Chitillo's been waiting. So why don't you start us off, Mark?
Well, thank you and good morning again, members of the commission and staff. I, I did also want to speak to the, the proposal to downshift to ministerial many of the, or some, some of the land use matters that are currently considered discretionary. And this has been a continuing program for the planning department and through our zoning ordinance back when we used, when we did the LUDC revision, that was a significant downshift. And there had been probably four or five before that. So we, there has been a, this, this continual change. And so I just want to put that in context for the proposal to move additional matters and entitlements to a discretionary level. And note the importance of process for the public and, and the importance of transparency and the availability of information. Without noticing, people are unaware. And, and maybe the posture is just, well, too bad. It's ministerial. So you don't get to even know what your neighbor is going to be doing. I, I think that's going to be met with pretty fierce resistance. This is a community that defines its environmental quality because we care about these things. And I would caution the, the staff from And I would caution the staff from trying to go too far with this. Recall that initially, the cannabis ordinance was interpreted by staff as being ministerial, which of course is an inappropriate interpretation of CEQA because a programmatic EIR was done. But early in the cannabis experience, the only way that members of the public could secure information about projects was to file an appeal. And fortunately, things have changed and Judge Anderly ruled that indeed, the county must follow discretionary procedures as they consider cannabis land use permits. And I actually feel that the cannabis ordinance is somewhat of a success story because you're not seeing the kinds of appeals that were originally feared. Today's a good example whereby identifying what are those standards that applicants and concerned community members are able to come together and develop strategies that ensure that their interests would each be addressed. So I would caution that we not try and take a big bite on a downshift and observe, of course, that any such ordinance amendment would itself be subject to CEQA. And it is somewhat challenging to hear that staff's ready to move ahead on this when we've had a number of other ordinance amendments that staff has identified resource constraints as creating the inability to address them. So I just would offer my support for Commissioner Cooney's comments and concerns. And, you know, know that this is something that the community is going to look at very carefully. Thank you for the opportunity to address this, Mr. Chair.
So, Mr. Chair, I'd just like to provide some feedback on Mr. Chitillo's comments. I think I want to make sure, I want to assure everybody, I have zero plans to make any changes to the cannabis ordinance. So there should be no worries there. That's not the kind of thing that we're talking about. And I think it's a kind of a misunderstanding to say that the county has been downshifting permits to ministerial because we really haven't. We've been downshifting permits from decision-makers, but our land use permits have been really discretionary because they allow for appeals for 30 years, you know? And so this is an attempt to make things that are small projects, small items, that make them ministerial, things that are truly ministerial. And if you've ever worked in the city of Santa Barbara, or any of you have been involved in any projects in the city of Santa Barbara, there are a lot of things in that community, in the city, that are truly ministerial. And there are ways to provide notice about what is happening so people can at least come in and look at plans and coordinate with their neighbors and that kind of thing. So I just want to make sure that everybody is aware that this is, what we are recommending will be thoughtful and will have public input. And also that these are things the board has been interested in as well. This is not something solely proposed by the department. And the board has the ability to redirect us to do something else if they don't support that concept. So this will be something the board will be deciding as we get through the work program process. But they have expressed interest in those two concepts to me. But again, I want to make sure that there'll be plenty of opportunity for public input. It will come before the commission. There will be environmental review. And the board will be the ultimate decision-maker, as they are with all of our ordinance amendments.
Thank you. Thank you for a full discussion of something that we all consider to be very important in what we do for and with the county. I would say with respect to the city of Santa Barbara, there was a recent case publicized where the commissions that were reviewing a project later on were told there's no action by those commissions possible because there was no appeal. The permit was issued. And what later came out was objections to the project, but nothing could be done. So it's a fine line. And I look forward to working with the department on exactly what items you do choose to downshift because I think there may well be some that would save time and increase efficiency. Okay, anything else, Ms. Plowman?
I think that covers it. I hope you have a productive hearing.
Thank you. Well, we've already eliminated two of our three items, so it's pretty productive so far.
Right.
We'll continue on.
Yeah, so I'm going to stay on because I think there is an item on the agenda regarding the organizational structure of the department. So I will remain until we hit that item.
Okay, great. We welcome you always. Any other comments from commissioners for Ms. Plowman? Not seeing any. Find out where we are on this agenda. There is an item here. Was this intended to be separate item staffing and management of the Planning Development Department and County Council Office?
Yeah, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I think we had a request from the commission a couple hearings ago, or last hearing, for just an overview from Planning Development, changes on staffing. And then as well as, there was a request for County Council to introduce or present their team to the commission as well.
Okay, who's in charge here?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, we can have Director Plowman lead off, and then we'll transition over to Jenna Richardson, the Division Chief in County Council's Office.
Great.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'm gonna, hopefully I can do this. Mr. Milos, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I wanted to, I was going to share a PowerPoint that shows the structure. And I'm just focusing on two things, sort of our executive team and then development review, so that... I don't know if I can do this.
Okay, I needed to make you a co-host. You should be able to do it now. And if, Ms. Plowman, if you could also send me the PowerPoint so I can post online, that would be much appreciated.
I will do that. Thank you, Mr. Milos. Okay, so this is, this is the, this is the structure of the department with respect to our executive team and our management team. So we have just recently hired Elise Dale, who's been involved in the planning process and process improvement projects at the county for many, many years. And then was also previously the deputy director for the Administration Division, probably 20 years ago. And we're very fortunate to be able to bring her back. So she joined us at the beginning of April. And she is also an assistant director, like Jeff Wilson. And what we did is we met to talk about sort of the strengths of each of our assistant directors. And we realigned the assignments of the divisions under each director, or assistant director. And so Mr. Wilson is going to continue to be overseeing development review. And energy minerals and compliance is a new addition for him. And building and safety is a new addition for him. So we thought it would be a good idea to have one assistant director oversee both building and safety and development reviews so that there was continuity between the permitting in the different divisions with one individual overseeing both of those divisions. And then Ms. Dale will be overseeing administration, which is one of her strengths, as she was once the deputy director, and then long-range planning as well. So I did take a little bit of time to prepare a slide on development review because these are the planners you see the most. And so I wanted you to get a sense of, you know, who our supervising planners are in that division and then the staff that is supervised by those planners. So we have Travis Seawards, who you all know well. He is our deputy director. And then we have Nicole Liu is, you know, within the last year, she has been promoted to a supervising planner. She's been with the department quite some time. Kimberly McCarthy has also been recently promoted, and she's been with the department quite a long time. Alex Tull is a supervising planner, which he comes quite often to the commission. We have a vacant supervising planner position in our North County currently. And then Joe Dargal is the supervising planner that oversees the cannabis team. And then these are the individual planners that are supervised by those individuals. I did not want to take a significant amount of time to go over each division, but I'm happy to answer any questions about this. And I wanted to make sure that this is responsive to Commissioner Park's request. So if there are questions about this, please, now's the time to ask.
Do I, let's see. I wanted to see if we have any hands showing, but...
I see Commissioner Park's hand is up.
Okay, Commissioner Park?
You know, I could ask you questions for days, but I don't think it's the time to do it. And, but I really appreciate, this is exactly what I had in mind. So thank you. And so the fact that I'm not going to ask questions now is not for lack of interest. It's because you did such a good job. I don't need to for this purpose. So thank you.
Happy to help, happy to help. So I will stop sharing, and then I will turn it over to Ms. Richardson.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. So I'm going to borrow a few remarks from our recent budget presentation at the board because I think it gives us a nice overview of County Council's Office. And then I'll introduce the particular deputies that are here today. So County Council's Office is essentially the county's in-house counsel, an internal law firm. Our clients are the board, the CEO, all of the county officers and county departments, a number of special districts, and a large number of Brown Act bodies, such as yourself. And our work is often invisible to the public, and it's much broader than the public often realizes what we do. At the highest level, our work is divided into two categories. So one, supporting county departments by providing legal advice on legal requirements. And two, protecting the county treasury by litigating matters. We currently have 32 attorneys and 11 support staff. In terms of structure, we are headed by County Counsel Rachel Van Mullum, who was appointed last summer after Mike Gazoni's retirement. Our chief assistant is Amber Holderness. And then Michelle Montez and I round out the executive team as the two division chiefs. So we're quite a bit smaller than the planners and the side of PND that comes before you. But because land use in the county of Santa Barbara raises complex issues, which you are very aware of and are contentious, PND is supported by a pretty deep bench of attorneys in our office. However, all of the attorneys that are here today also advise other county departments and litigate cases. So they all have a role in PND and PND projects and the planning commission and board, but they also do a number of other things. So in terms of my background, I've been advising PND and the commission for over 10 years and about nine months ago stepped into this division chief role. So that's why you've seen a little bit less of me, but I'm still very involved in planning matters. In particular, the wrinkles of cannabis permits and business licenses. And I am still the district counsel for the Air Pollution Control District as well. I'll still have some PND projects going through the process, in part to make sure my Brown Act knowledge doesn't get too rusty. So you'll still be seeing some of me, but you'll see a lot more of Johanna Hartley, Brian Pettit, Callie Kim, and Jeff Brax. So I'll just give a little bit of intro of each of them. So Johanna Hartley was unable to attend today. She's at another meeting. But she's been with our office for about nine years, working on a wide variety of advisory work and projects. She tends to staff more of the long-range planning items, not the permit development applications. And she was the primary attorney for the Montecito Planning Commission for several years. Ms. Hartley also advises Resource Recovery and Waste Management Division, the County Water Agency, and the Real Property Division of General Services. Brian Pettit, who's somewhere on your screen, has been with our office for about a total of seven years. He took a brief hiatus to move back east, but thankfully returned in 2018. And in addition to reviewing a number of the projects that come before you, he's also currently the primary attorney for the Montecito Planning Commission. Mr. Pettit also advises Public Works, Flood Control, the Local Emergency Medical Services Agency, and is litigating several cases and appeals. Callie Kim joined us in the early days of the pandemic in July 2020. So she's, I don't believe, met any of you in person yet. We're looking forward to that at some point. She is a Santa Barbara native, but spent 12 years practicing law in Alaska before returning here to join our land use group. She's been reviewing an increasing number of staff reports, so you'll be seeing a lot more of her and spent her early months with the county working on cannabis business license, sorry, appeals of, not planning commission appeals, but court appeals of cannabis business licenses and notices of violation. She also advises the Laguna County Sanitation District and works on some complex county water issues and is currently litigating several cases and appeals. And last but not least, for the attorneys here today, Jeff Brax is our newest hire, joining us in October. And although he is new to us, he is very experienced in land use matters, previously working in Sonoma and Napa counties, which have many land use conflicts that are somewhat similar to those that we see in Santa Barbara. So you'll be seeing a lot more of him. And he also advises the Agricultural Commissioner, works on cannabis ordinance and business license issues, and advises the Office of Emergency Management and County Fire Department. So as you can see, we have a pretty broad group of attorneys here to support you. And thank you for giving us this opportunity to introduce ourselves, especially since we haven't seen many of you in person in quite a while. And as always, you can feel free to reach out to us if you have any questions about a project or an issue or a potential conflict. You can reach out in advance of any hearing. I would probably be your best point of contact, and then I can get you connected to the appropriate attorney if it isn't me. So thank you for the opportunity to tell you a little bit about ourselves and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Richardson. And thanks to all the council for appearing here. I think this is the most attorneys that we've had on one call so far in history. So it's great, great to feel that we have people backing us up on all the work we do. Question, a comment from Commissioner Park?
Yes, again, I'm not going to ask questions, and it's not for lack of interest. But I think this was just an excellent report and exactly what I had in mind. And I had figured you'd gotten some sort of promotion, Ms. Richardson, from where you were and where you weren't on our videos, but I didn't know for sure. So congratulations. And I congratulate Mr. Brass for joining the team. And I look forward to meeting Ms. Kim in person. I practice in Alaska as well, and I'm still licensed to practice there, so we can share some crazy stories, I'm sure. And I'm also very glad to hear that Ms. Hartley's still in team because I haven't seen her in video for quite some time, and I wonder where she was. So very good. Thank you a lot.
She's still here. We're keeping her busy with other things right now, but we'll see her soon. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much for taking the time, Ms. Plowman and Ms. Richardson. We very much appreciate it. And we'll excuse you now. I think we'll take a five-minute break and because we've been going for a while and waiting to go for a while. And then we'll pick up with our regular agenda, item number one.
All right, we're back on the air, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Vialos. All right, we finished the the initial item. So if you would please read item one into the record, Mr. Vialos, we'll get started on that.
Yes, certainly. The following is a hearing on the request of Leona Morales to consider case number twenty-one APL seventy-five and appeal of the Director's approval of case number twenty-one A two M twenty-six.
Secretary Wilson, what is the status of this matter?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, there was a memo and I thought it was sent out to the Commissioners yesterday or the day before regarding the applicant withdrawing it. And that memo recommends actions for the commission to just acknowledge the withdrawal of the, the permit, the home state permit and acknowledge that with that withdrawal, there's no action for the planning commission to take and then determine that this action is exempt from CEQA. And if the commission don't have that memo, let me know and I can make sure that it gets sent out. But those are, in brief, the recommended actions as since the application was withdrawn, there's no project, so no formal action. We're asking the commission to acknowledge it because it was publicly noticed.
I didn't receive that memo. I mean, I may have received it. I didn't review it. So I'll ask the Commissioners, number one, if they have any disclosures to make on this matter and and then we'll ask if there are any other comments. Not seeing any, how we asked, Commissioner Park?
Yeah, just in terms of disclosure, simply that I, I, I went by the site a few times. And also, do we need a motion, this acknowledgement? Is that a motion thing or what do we do?
We have done that for other matters like this. So I think what we're doing is simply acknowledging through our motion that this matter is not subject to our review. Would you like to make that motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll move that we acknowledge that the application has been withdrawn.
Is there a second? Second, Commissioner Farini. Any further discussions? Okay, roll call.
Mr. Chair, just before we do roll call, I just wanted to make note that we didn't have any members of the public who wanted to speak, but I do want to make note that the appellant is, is present.
Okay. Is this Leona Morales?
Correct.
Is there any need for Ms. Morales to speak to the commission?
Mr. Chair, I would recommend giving her the opportunity at least.
Okay. Ms. Morales, can you hear us? You're muted on our screen here. Mr. Vialos, do you have contact with Ms. Morales?
I, I don't. It may be that she walked away or is unable to unmute herself.
Okay. We'll move on then. Commissioner Park, did you have something to add?
No, although actually since you've called on me and I guess my hand's still up by accident. Next time if something like this happens, maybe somebody could just send out a text or something to each of us that says, don't read item number one. That would be really helpful to me. So, thanks.
Okay. Mr. Vialos, we're now ready for the roll call, I believe.
Commissioner Brightley.
Aye.
Commissioner Park.
Aye.
Commissioner Farini.
Aye.
Commissioner Martinez.
Aye.
And Chair Cooney.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Vialos. And while you have the floor, if you could read item two, please.
Certainly, I'd be happy to. The following is the hearing on the request of Pierre Labarge to consider case number twenty-one APL forty-seven and appeal of the Director's August twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one decision to approve land use permit, case number nineteen L U P three seven one.
Okay, Commissioners, any ex parte communications that you would like to disclose before we consider this matter? Not seeing any. Commissioner Park again.
Simply that I'd heard from Amy Steinfield, who's, I believe, the attorney for the applicant, right? Yeah, to some degree about the progress of this. And I think I received a phone message from Marc Chotillo as well. And again, is this, do we, is this simply a motion for acknowledgement?
It is.
So I'll make that same motion to acknowledge that the appeal in this case has been withdrawn and that no further action of the planning commission is required.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Brightley. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on this item before we act on the motion?
We did not have any, any speakers sign up for this item.
I see Ms. Courtney is in the hearing, I mean, Ms. Taylor is in the hearing. If if you'd like to address the permission, you're welcome to. You're not required to, though, Courtney. Thank you.
Morning. I'll just say good morning and thank you for acknowledging this item. We have settled and appreciate you letting us use this process to get folks to the table to get to neighborly resolution. So thank you all.
Thanks. Thanks for your efforts. Okay, Mr. Vialos, then roll call on acknowledgement here of the withdrawal of appeal.
Commissioner Brightley.
Aye.
Commissioner Park.
Aye.
Commissioner Farini.
Aye.
Commissioner Martinez.
Aye.
And Chair Cooney.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. And our final item on today's agenda, item three, Mr. Vialos.
The following is a hearing at the request of Planning and Development Department staff on behalf of the Board of Supervisors to review the proposed new projects in the five-year CIP Capital Improvement Program for fiscal years twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-six and report to the Board of Supervisors as to their conformity with the comprehensive plan pursuant to Government Code Sections six five four oh one and six five four oh two.
Thank you. See, I saw Mr. Lackey a few minutes ago. Are you in the room, David?
We have we have the project planner, Ms. Brizuela here, and then we also have our Mr. Clement here in the hearing room.
Oh, okay, great. Welcome. Who's going to start?
Good morning, Chair Cooney and Commissioners. I'm just waiting for the presentation. Good morning, Chair Cooney and Commissioners. I'm just waiting for the presentation to appear.
Okay.
Yes. Will we be full screening the presentation, or should I start?
It's up to you. We can see the presentation, so we're ready to go.
Okay, that works. Okay, so once again, good morning, Chair Cooney and Commissioners. For the record, my name is Jamila Prisuela, and today, for your review and consideration, I will be presenting an overview of the 2021 through 2026 Capital Improvement Program, abbreviated CIP, for conformity review with a comprehensive plan. Next slide, please. The purpose of this hearing is for your Commission to review the capital, sorry, to review the new capital projects included in the five-year Capital Improvement Program as referred by the Board of Supervisors, and to consider the conformity of these projects with a comprehensive plan pursuant to Government Code Sections 65401 and 65402. Next slide, please. In the following four slides, I will give a brief overview of the CIP process and government code requirements, beginning with a summary of the process. The CIP is a compilation of county-proposed capital projects to implement various plans, including the County Comprehensive Plan. It is prepared and administered by the County Executive Office, and while the CIP does cover a five-year planning period, it is updated annually to reflect ongoing changes such as new projects that are added and completed projects that are excluded. Next slide, please. This slide shows how today's hearing fits within the annual CIP process as a whole. The process begins with each county department submitting proposed new projects to the CEO. Then, the CIP is then developed by the Budget and Research Division after the Board of Supervisor conceptually approves the CIP and forward the new CIP projects to your Commission for Conformity Determination. Today, your Commission will review the new projects within the CIP for conformity with the comprehensive plan, and staff will recommend that you forward your findings to the Board of Supervisors to receive and file at a hearing. Next slide, please. Moving on to the Government Code Requirement, Section 65401 requires that the county prepares a list of new projects recommended for planning, initiation, or construction, then that the county performs an annual programmatic level review of new capital projects. Following that, that the county determines conformity of the new projects within the comprehensive plan. And finally, for the Planning Commission to report the conformity determination to the Board of Supervisors. Next slide, please. As for Government Code Section 65402, this code section requires that the county performs a project-level review of new capital projects that require any of the following: acquisition or disposal of real property, vacation or abandonment of the streets, or construction of public structures. As with Section 65401, Section 65402 requires conformity determination of the new projects with a comprehensive plan. And it also requires the Planning Commission to report the conformity determination to the Board of Supervisors. Next slide, please. There are a total of 23 projects included in the CIP for fiscal year 2021 through 2026. A departmental breakdown of the 23 projects is as follows. Three are from general services capital projects. Two are Public Works Laguna County sanitation projects. 14 are Public Works flood control projects. And the final four are Public Works transportation projects. Next slide, please. Out of the 23 projects, eight projects included in the 2021 through 2026 CIP have appeared in previous years' CIPs. Since these are not considered new project, these eight projects were included in a separate table labeled Table 2 in Attachment B. Next slide, please. Attachment B, Table 1 of the Planning Commission staff report includes a list of all 15 new projects and their associated conformity analysis for the purposes of Section 65401, and if applicable, Section 65402. These new projects include infrastructure upgrades and improvements and facility maintenance and renovation programs. Staff recommends that eight of the 15 projects are found in conformity with the comprehensive plan. The remaining seven will require future conformity review, which I will address later in the presentation. Next slide, please. So for your consideration, this is a breakdown of the 15 truly new projects included in the CIP for fiscal year 2021 through 2026. A departmental breakdown of the 15 projects is as follows. Three are from general services capital projects. One is a Public Works Laguna County sanitation project. Eight are Public Works flood control projects. And three are Public Works transportation projects. Next slide, please. Next, we have Attachment C of the staff report. It includes the remaining seven projects for which the conformity determination could not be made at this time. Location, project description information, and property acquisition have not yet been finalized for these projects, and therefore, further analysis is still required. Next slide, please. Three of the seven projects which are listed on this slide involve acquisition of property or construction of building, public building or structures, and therefore are subject to further review pursuant to Government Code Section 65402. Additionally, these three projects necessitate additional review to determine their conformity. Next slide, please. The CIP serves as a funding mechanism that helps prioritize funding for projects. It does not appropriate funds or otherwise commit the county to particular projects. The CIP is therefore not considered a project as defined by CEQA, and therefore is not subject to environmental review. Next slide, please. To conclude, staff recommends that the Planning Commission take the recommended actions as listed on page one of the April 19 staff report. And then those recommendations are also summarized on this slide. Next slide, please. This concludes staff presentation, and staff is available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Prizella. Okay. Commissioners, did you keep up with Ms. Prizella and have any questions or concerns? Commissioner Brightley.
So you guys already know I'm a public works nerd, and I'm going to keep it really, really simple. My question is, the cases that are in Montecito, where does the Montecito Planning Commission fit into government code consistency stuff? Because they're on our list, but did they also opine on, like, you know, the Channel Drive case?
Yeah, thank you for your question, Commissioner. So with the conformity review, we do look into the comprehensive plan, and so we look into conformity with that. And typically, when it's, if it falls within one of the community plans, we do also look into that. And so it did conform, and again, this does not, I guess, like tie the Department of Public Works in this case to that project, so they may not even proceed with this project, or they may, so, yeah, did that answer your question?
Not really. My question was, does the Channel Drive case go to the Montecito Planning Commission, or is that, am I wrong in assuming it's in the Montecito Planning area?
So Commissioner Brightley, I could probably add to this. Yeah, so the Government Code requires that the planning agency for the county make that review and determination of conformity. So the County Planning Commission, in this case, serves as that entity, and so it doesn't go to the Montecito Planning Commission.
Got it. Perfect. And that was, that was, my giggle was, Ms. Prisuela, you did a great job of going through this. I know it can be complicated, but really appreciate your clarity that these are not launchable projects right now, and that's why we're looking at them in two stages. Thank you.
Commissioner Park? Commissioner Park, you're muted.
Some think that should be a permanent condition. The, but I want to express my agreement with Commissioner Brightley that that was an excellent presentation by you, Ms. Prisuela. I have a very general question, and maybe it's triggered by seeing Mr. Lackey's face, because it might be a David Lackey question, I don't know. This is, I think, the fourth hearing of this sort that I've sat through, and and, you know, I vote for things, and because some things are controversial, I like to always at least be able to say why I voted for something. And here, I don't actually even understand what a conformity review is. I mean, how do I compare these projects with a comprehensive plan? What am I looking for to determine conformity? So if somebody can answer that in a minute or less, that'd be great.
All right, I'll take a stab at that, and certainly Jamila can add to it. So when we look at this, we're kind of thinking about the projects and their potential. The easiest way to look at it is, what are the potential impacts that that project may have in terms of, on the physical environment? And so, as you know, most policies address these resource issues in one way or the other, either in a comprehensive plan, policies, or community plan policies. And so we look at the project itself to see, is there likelihood to potentially create impact? And then look at the source of the document. Maybe there's some previous environmental review or analysis that's, or like a lot of the debris basins, they have the debris basin management plan. They've done a program EIR to address a lot of these issues that we can rely upon to ensure that those conditions for those projects would not, you know, they would be mitigated and not create impacts. On the 65402, those involve looking at either selling county property or constructing new buildings. And the only circumstances that we've seen, at least where that kind of comes into play, is that, you know, we look at the comprehensive plan map, and see, for example, there might have been a proposed trail on that property and on the Parks, Recreation and Trails map, and so we would work with the department to ensure that, at least, the ability to reserve an easement on that property before it gets sold. So in general, the conformity review with the comprehensive plan looks at those policies, and often they're related to the potential impacts that they may have upon some resource that a policy addresses.
I think that's a very good answer, and exactly of the length that I was hoping for. I'm still a little puzzled as to what appropriate effort I've put into determining that these 15 projects meet the standards that Mr. Lackey's expressed, but I don't want to hold up the hearing.
Any other comments from Commissioners? Are we ready to make a motion on this recommendation of staff?
I'll move. I will definitely move to concur with staff's recommendation for the purposes of finding consistency with government code 65401, and also with 65402 as outlined in the staff report for today's hearing. It's efficient.
And we will make a report to the Board of Supervisors consistent with our findings.
There we go. Add that to the motion. I didn't turn the page.
And the final one that we should express is that our review and report on the CIP is not a project pursuant to CEQA. Is that correct, that part of your motion?
Yes, that's part of the motion. Why is that not in the staff recommendation? Okay.
Good. I think we've cobbled it together.
Considered as the shortest item ever. Is that the shortest item ever in, like, since I've been on the Commission?
We should ask for public comment, and it's appropriate to do that now before we have a second. Mr. Villalobos, are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this item?
Mr. Chair, no, we do not have any speakers on this item.
And Ms. Prisuela, anything further from staff?
Sorry, I couldn't unmute myself. No, thank you, Commissioner. No further is needed. Thank you.
You're welcome, and thank you for your presentation. Very succinct and complete. Okay, so Commissioner Brightley has made a motion to approve staff's recommendation. Is there a second? Anyone? Commissioner?
Second.
Commissioner Park does. Okay. All right, Mr. Villalobos, the roll call, please.
Commissioner Brightley.
Aye.
Commissioner Park.
Aye.
Commissioner Farini.
Aye.
Commissioner Martinez.
Aye.
Chair Cooney.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. Mr. Wilson, anything further for us to address this afternoon, this morning?
You're kidding me. That concludes our business for today. No other items.
All right, well, we have a a schedule that brings us back three weeks in a row, so we'll look forward to seeing everybody on the Fourth of May next week. With that, I'll adjourn the meeting at the Santa Barbara County Planning Commission for the 27th of April. Thank you all. With that, I'll adjourn the meeting at the Santa Barbara County Planning Commission for the 27th of April. Thank you all.